Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Let's get started. I work right on time now. I think there probably may be some other people who are striving to help, because of the weather. Welcome you tonight. Very happy you could come out on a rainy night to talk about the future of the community center. We've got...
Can you turn off the volume?
Can you not hear Jay?
Not very well.
Well, I'll try to speak louder into the mic. Right, okay. All right, okay. 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 We'll begin by introducing the commissioners. This is a meeting, this is a special meeting of the ANC 34G. We are, we've been working on this project for a very long time and we expect to continue to work on it for at least the next three years while this project goes forward. But we'll first introduce the commissioners. Becky, you want to start?
Hello, everybody. I'm Rebecca Meadek. I am 34G04. I have Lafayette Elementary School in Park, and I go to Henderson, Broad Range, Utah, Nebraska.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abraham Kleiman. I'm the commissioner for ANC 34G01, which is Hawthorne and Barnaby Woods.
I'm Rambo Ludi, 3G07, which is bound by Military Reno, Nebraska, Nevada.
Hi, everybody. Jerry Mallett, 3G05, bound by Western down to Mount Military from Connecticut over to Broad Range.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Dan Radfield, I represent 3G06, and that is Chevy Chase Circle down to Connecticut Avenue, Military to Chevy Chase Park.
And I'm Randy Speck. I represent 3G, 34G03, which is the area between Nebraska, Utah, and Broad Range, basically. Tonight, as I mentioned, we're going to talk about the community center the entire night. This is a special meeting. It's not our regular scheduled meeting, so we're not going to take up a lot of other issues tonight. As many of you know, this is a project we've been working on for about two years now, over two years. And it culminated in a report that the commission prepared last January and submitted to the mayor and to the council on our expectations for what the community center can and should be going forward, how we can modernize the community center and make it a real hub for the community. The mayor recommended in her budget, and then the council passed the budget in May, about nineteen million dollars for modernization of the community center. It's spread over three years, three fiscal years, beginning with 2019, and that fiscal year begins on October 1st this year. So we're trying to get a head start on that process. We have with us tonight representatives from DPR and from DGS. DPR is the, I guess, the substantive lead agency on this project because it's their building ultimately. And DGS builds buildings for the city, and so they will have the responsibility for the design and the construction based on DPR's technical needs and plans for moving forward. So Brent Cisco is going to be here from, is here from DPR. Brent, you want to introduce yourself?
Thank you. Hello, everybody.
If you push the button on the mic, just begin the mic. There you go.
Does this work?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having us out tonight. Brent Cisco, thank you, Commissioner, for the introduction. With DPR, just here tonight to, this is an introductory meeting, but just wanted to introduce myself and answer any questions, talk about, I think, some process tonight, and hopefully be a resource for this meeting tonight, because this is a very exciting project moving forward. This is an incredible building, an incredible resource to the community. And I'm also working on the Lafayette, the Lafayette Recreation Center project too, right now, with Commissioner Meadek. So we've been meeting quite a lot, actually, last week in this building. So I'm really sort of getting familiar with this, this community, and it's been, it's been a real pleasure, and I'm looking forward to this project too. So thank you for having me. I'm a landscape architect. I've been with DPR in the ten years of October, so I'm a veteran now at the, at the agency. And just a little bit, I started out, was hired designing playgrounds, parks around the city, but as our agency sort of refined a little bit, I've become more of a project manager for all kinds of construction projects, from dog parks to playgrounds to recreation centers now, and we work with DGS as the implementing agency for construction. So we're just one of the owner agencies. DGS, of course, builds and maintains all the facilities in the DPR inventory. And just very quickly, Jamie Johnson from DGS is with us tonight, and she'll be helping out on the project management side of this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. And Jamie, thank you. I hope to see a lot of both of you going forward. Just let me describe a little bit about what I expect we can accomplish in the meeting tonight. First of all, you shouldn't expect to go away with any decisions being made. We're not going to make any decisions tonight. This is our first meeting. It's going to be a part of a lengthy process where we're going to discuss and consider all various options for the building moving forward. But we've got two major items on the agenda for tonight. First is what the configuration of the building, the design of the building ought to be, and second is the, what do we do for the transition period? When we have a period of maybe a year and a half, two years of construction when the building is not going to be available? What are our options for continuing the programs that are so important and vital for the community? A whole variety of work programs, some of them requiring some very specialized spaces and some of them just requiring sort of meeting spaces. But we want to talk about both of those issues tonight. The framework, I think, we should think about is how do we define the work that we need to do going forward from now, both in terms of planning and designing, the configuration of the building, and in planning for the transition. So what I would like people to think about as we go through this process and have a discussion about is what, how should we organize ourselves and plan for implementing this pretty complex project over the next three years? And how are we going to interact with DGS and DPR? How are we going to organize ourselves so that we can communicate most effectively with DPR and DGS? And how can we make this process work as smoothly and efficiently as possible so that we can use that nineteen million dollars that's been allocated most effectively? And how can we make sure it's going to be done as painlessly as possible for both the residents who live nearby and for the people who use the community center? Now, I'd hope to have somebody from the library over tonight. Is anyone up? Yes.
Archie Williams.
Could you come up and introduce yourself just a moment?
Good evening. I'm Archie Williams with the DC Public Library. I serve as the Intergovernmental Affairs Specialist. I joined the library in 2007, just as we were beginning our transformation process. And I've been involved with the nineteen projects that we've done so far, whether it's been a renovation, a full rebuild, or what have you. So I'm just here primarily as an observer, since we share the campus, and we would just like to see how it moves forward. Of course, we would like to see and join such as life.
So how do you spell your last name?
Williams.
Williams, okay. I just didn't catch it. Thank you. Archie. Mr. Williams, we're very happy to have you. And, you know, we do think, we began this process over two years ago, thinking that we would look at the entire campus, including the library, and eventually we decided that that just wasn't the work that was too much for us to try to tackle. But we still think that there can be opportunities to work closely with the library, to make sure that our work here is coordinated with the library so that we don't interfere with your operations, and to see whether there are some ways in which we can share facilities over time, too. We think that that's certainly in the interest of the city, and especially during a transition period, there can be things we can do with the library to make that transition smoother. So we're looking forward to cooperating with the library through this whole process, and we're very happy to have you here. Thank you. Okay. As I said, this is going to be a really tremendous challenge, I think, for the community. We've had a vision of what we want the community center to be, and now we've got to try to make that happen. And I think it can be realized, but we're going to need a lot of help from a lot of people. And that means that the commissioners up here aren't going to be able to do it ourselves. And we're going to look to the community and your expertise and the expertise of others in the community that we can draw on to try to address some of the issues that are going to inevitably arise as we move forward. So as I said, tonight, I think we should focus on the process more than anything else and see if we can decide how we're going to address these issues as they come up in the future. I'm hoping that we can come away from this meeting, maybe with some working groups that can be maybe by some of the commissioners, or at least just by some of the commissioners, to focus on particular issues, and then that working group can come back and talk to the larger group who are working with us so that we can make some decisions about how we move forward. We want to make sure that this project also represents the broadest possible involvement of the community. That means not just the people who are here, not just the commissioners, but as many people as we can get, as large as possible. And we want it to be a broad cross-section of the community, too. There's a strong representation here tonight from seniors, but we want to make sure everybody gets represented in that process so that we have as many voices heard as possible. So does that sound like an appropriate approach for the evening? Everybody have any comments about that? Commissioners?
Yeah. So I'm very interested in the process of this. I'm an architect, so I've done projects like this for many years. And, you know, getting started is extremely important, and, you know, I think obviously the first thing that has to be done is we have to all agree on what's, what the program for this building's going to be, you know, what's going to go in and how big it's going to be, you know, whether we actually decide to use the old building framework, whether we start from scratch. And so I'd like to hear how, you know, this, this whole process should be run by DC, DPR, DGS, so I'd like to hear how you guys, what kind of schedule you have for determining exactly what this building is going to be and, you know, what you have to say.
I think we were talking about that in the last agenda item, the short-term and longer-term schedule and how we're going to approach this, but I think we want to start off by...
I think we should just do a bunch of committees before we...
No, no, no. Well, I think, my view is that they should be listening to us, first of all, and we should communicate now if we think it needs to be done.
I think they're, I mean, they're professionals, and I'd like to hear how we plan on what their vision is, and then we can, you know, I'm hoping to be a big, more big part of it.
Okay. Brent, you want to do that? I'm going to start there.
Sure, absolutely. That's, that's actually a great question. So our standard process, you know, each, when a capital project gets on the budget for, for the district government, for instance, this project, I think it starts fiscal year 19, so October 1st, we will have funding, which means we can go out and hire an architect or design someone to help us with moving things forward. So what we would typically do is sort of, when the money becomes available, that lets us put out a solicitation for an architect or a designer to come on board. And we really, we like to have some feedback about, to give the architect a little bit of direction on what this project's all about, which I think is why what you've done already is really, really encouraging, a hundred fifty-five page report was pretty, was pretty amazing. I think we might be able to use that in moving forward, absolutely, and it's part of the RFP process for hiring someone. But really, Commissioner Speck, I think you hit it right on, what we really try to do at the first of a project is, is come out, not only DPR and DGS, but the person that's on, the team that's actually going to be designing the new facility, and we want them to hear with their own ears from the community what, what the wish list is, if that is, if that means a new building, if it is a renovated building. More importantly, it's really the programming that drives those spaces. That's what I think we're really interested in here, and I know that Chevy Chase has got a lot of really interesting and unique programs. The fencing program is, is pretty incredible. Obviously, the Arts and Trash Room, which is, blew my mind. I'm not sure what we're going to do with all that stuff while we renovate the facility, but just a lot of neat, you know, a black, there's a black room for developing old film. Dark room, I'm sorry, not black room, it's just dark. But you guys have a really, a lot of really interesting stuff here, and so we want to make sure when we hire an architect, they have experience doing what is going to be involved in this project, like we want to make sure that they have extensive experience with, first of all, doing work in the, in the district, because, you know, the district's its own animal when it comes to programming and permits and environmental regulations. But also, more specifically, that they have to show us that they have done some work in the past, on previous project, multiple projects, that are similar to what we're going to do here at this facility, and that all goes into, so when we send out an RFP for an architect, you know, we get back a bunch of solicitations, and we'll go through those and sort of filter out the petters and the bidders, and we go through a technical design process, where we'll look at all kinds of qualifications, and eventually select, you know, an architect with the best qualifications for this project. And there is some of that, they do give us, it's somewhat based on cost, but it's more based on the proposal being responsive to what we want. So it's not only, it's not solely just based on cost. So, you know, when we actually have that person on board or that team on board, that's really where we sort of, things sort of kick into high gear. We come back out, we would announce a meeting, give two to three weeks' notice about what we'd like to accomplish in that, in that meeting, bring the architect in to listen to your thoughts and your ideas. So it's really community sort of driven, the design is really going to be driven. Obviously, we would rely on their, their expertise for what they think can be done, you know, in this facility. It's just by initial observations, it's broken up, but it's, it's kind of choppy. There's a lot of sort of hidden areas, and talking with Ms. Randy who works here, I think she's sometimes concerned that when she leaves at night, that she's not, sure there might be somebody in a space in the building she doesn't know about. So, you know, I think that we could have a much more open sort of floor plan, I think is what we at DPR is sort of envisioning. We want to make sure that, that our vision aligns with the community's vision, because that's really how you get a true, true partnership, and ultimately, the community is going to be the folks that use the facility and benefit from the programs here, so we want to make sure that we're on the same page and moving forward and stuff like that. That's, that's sort of our, sort of how we start a project. And looking at some past projects like Edgewood, for instance, where we, it was sort of similar to this, but we actually knocked down a bluefield house and started with a new, a new design. We went through probably two years' worth of community meetings, probably meeting, I would say every sixty days, every sixty to ninety days. And, you know, we kind of, that's sort of the timeframe between meetings, because we want to give the architects enough time to, to listen and react and provide, you know, enough feedback to make another meeting worthwhile. We want to be, you know, deliberate in what we do and efficient with everybody's time, so we're not just meeting for the sake of meeting. We want to meet and be able to provide information to, to everybody. So that's sort of, you know, we're starting, and over the course of time, we'll come to the community with an additional kickoff meeting. Again, that, that planning period could take two years, it really could take a long time, depending on how much is in the facility. This is a really large, amazing space that can be really even more amazing. So, you know, that's, I think that's sort of what we're looking at, a couple of years probably of discussions, and, you know, this for Lafayette, which was a small facility, we're, we've already passed a year on, on the design discussions for that facility. So hopefully, that's, that's a little bit about the process that we go through. And again, you know, the community, we typically have done sort of a base to get more and more information on what folks like, but I understand you've already done a tremendous amount of that information, so that, that could, that's possibly a huge time saver for us. So, you know, I think you guys have already done a lot of, a lot of the footwork that we would probably otherwise go through on a project like this, and just to keep ongoing a little bit, don't be quiet. So we'll go through the design process, initially get a majority consensus on why it's going to happen at the facility, and then we sort of turn it over to the partners at DGS, who go out and hire a general contractor to make those designs and plans into reality. In this case, you know, we would probably look at, would that be a phased renovation? Is, is the core of the building going to stay and we can do, you know, certain parts of the building while keeping certain other parts of the building open? Or, you know, does it mean that we're going to close that entire thing and maybe transition some programs to other locations, perhaps working with the library, they can accommodate certain programs? But, you know, there's pluses and minuses to all that, and we'll definitely get into all that discussion the more we get into the specific stuff this project moving forward.
Brent, can I just ask you a couple of questions?
Remind us how we're doing.
I don't know why. First of all, with regard to the schedule, when do you think, when do you anticipate, funding starts on October 1st, when would you expect you would have an RFP out for the design?
Typically, so if, if the funding hits October 1st, we would have that RFP out in the month of October, I would say late October, early November, and that's honestly just because of the DGS procurement offices. It's, it's, they're doing RFPs for schools, libraries, parks and recreation projects, so they're, they're pretty severely backlogged. But we think that by the first of the year, by the first of 2019, we can be back early in the year with a, with a design team on board, ready to start those discussions about this, what, what this project will entail and more specific guidance, drilling down into the design.
When you're preparing the RFP, is that a process that you seek any community input on, or is that something that's just purely done within DPR?
We, we, in this case, we are absolutely going to look at the information you guys have provided us about wanted programming, because that, that really helps inform the architects what we're looking for. So when they respond to us, we're looking for those things. Did they think about the things we, we asked them to look at? And it also helps us sort of validate on the back end when we look at the technical proposals, did they consider A, B, and C? Do they have experience with, you know, a remodel versus a rebuild? And so we'll absolutely use that as a resource.
Jerry? How long do you typically have the RFP on its street?
I want to say it's between, I think the minimum is thirty days for this type of product, I believe.
Thirty calendar days or thirty work...
I think it's thirty calendar days, I believe. And I can double check that. Some of the stuff tonight is not, I'm not, it's not my expertise, but I can definitely check that. And we've had RFPs out there for less time, but we have found that it's actually been, it's prohibited us from, from getting good bids, because people can be, you know, really, it just gives people more time and more time to ask questions, and we, we're seeing a benefit to actually keeping it open longer in the long run.
Okay, yes, sir. For any more to community planning and reviewing of bids submitted to you?
That's a good question. So in the RFP and the review process, there's a technical evaluation panel, is what the procurement office, procurement office calls it, and that is comprised only of DC government employees. I don't think any, we've ever, or they don't allow any, I think, outside folks to sit in those panels. And that's why I think it's important that we understand what you're looking for. We're really looking at their experience as an architect and their past performance on projects like this, so it's, it's an internal review.
Yes, Susan.
I may be a little behind, but I'd like to think that, I know the seniors, when they were talking about what they would like, they were operating from not having seen much else. Do you look at state-of-the-art facilities to help inform us in terms of what would be best for our community?
Yes, ma'am. We actually, do you mean once we get into the design process and we're, we're talking about this is something we want to explore, like an active adult areas and programs? Absolutely. We, we recently, I think it was last, not the issue of the year before last, if anybody's been down to the new Kenneworth Recreation Center, it has a beautiful sort of wing dedicated to their active adult seniors with its own kitchen, its own sort of living space. It's the Kenneworth Recreation Center?
Kenneworth.
Kenneworth. It's 4321 Ord Street, not far from the Deanwood Metro Station. But it, it's really nice. It's got a, like I said, a sort of, a living area with couches, you know, playing, car tables, not car tables, but furniture, comfortable furniture. And it's sort of adjacent to it is our, is our newest sort of state-of-the-art demonstration kitchen, where we actually have a television on the wall that can project out to a classroom. So those, it's sort of almost its own wing of the building that's been super popular.
But I think generational facilities as well? I mean, I don't think they want to restrict it just for what senior interests. We haven't reviewed it, but I think we all express the interest in an intergenerational possibility for whatever we have. But I haven't, I don't know where to go to look at that type of thing, if it even exists.
We do. So Kenneworth is actually a really good example, because it has both, you know, an indoor gym museum with a basketball court that the youth really use a lot, a fitness, you know, fitness room with state-of-the-art fitness equipment. There are really a lot of different age groups used, and that's free to the DC public to use those, that fitness room. Where, you know, we can show, when we get sort of closer to the design things, we can actually bring in photos and, and boards, and we can put up boards around the room and photos to give people an idea of what you could, what you could maybe expect to see as part of a DPR facility. I think we have some really nice examples of stuff we've done that caters to all, all ages, all races, all everything. We try to be all-inclusive for everything we do.
Could we organize trips for us to go care to Kenneworth?
Sure.
I'd like to admit, I don't know where Deanwood is.
Absolutely. We've done that before, too. If folks are interested, we can organize, you know, trips, tours and things like that, absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to mention, in the past...
What would you like to say?
I just want to mention, in the past year, year and a half, two years now, that we've been doing this, there's also been groups of us have gone around repairing facilities within the city to see what has recently been brought online, what was coming online. So we also, when we were putting together our report, also incorporated a lot of those same concepts, that same idea at the outset. So we've already done some of that, and that's certainly something that, moving forward, we obviously want to continue.
Absolutely.
Just in case you hadn't seen the report, a lot of that was included in kind of how we put some, a lot of our thoughts together.
I forgot to mention, too, Halles AIDS Community Center or Recreation Center opened on July 4th and has a really nice combination of amenities for, for both seniors and young adults in that one, too, as well. We're happy to send all this information, if it's helpful to, to the commissioners and the group.
Jay?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, just mentioned Halles AIDS. Been there, looked over. Recently, I spent thirty years as an urbanist, housing area developer. I've also spent the last twenty-two years, the entire number, in the tree, including the entire Ward 3, because I served as the oil collections early roadie. So I, I worked for the tire. Now, not to disrespect the, the landscape architect, but it's like you talk about Halles AIDS, and their bathroom should not be ADA standards, so I don't know where you got your architect or engineer, if you can't open the doors with a limo five-hour pull or push. So, but, and then you talk about Hill House. This is the only community center in, actually, west of the Falkland, which includes an ar... So, but, and then you talk about Hill House, this is the only community center in, actually, west of the park, which includes an enclave of wood, so wood floor. When they did their study and they brought together people from the community, they didn't really survey, they couldn't afford to survey the entire block, the other five ANC's. And you have a school here, so when they came out, they were promised a megawatt for the quarter. I don't know if anyone measured this megawatt for the quarter, but it's 50 by 70. And that's the size of what was added to the Halles AIDS. This room is 50, it's not 70. This is the largest room. They taught us to gut this place, strip the walls off this place, and build a fresh in 14 months. This elevator was put in 20 years ago. The promise was to do it in six months. It took 16 months of this place being closed. So that what we think that we got from DPR or DPS, had an early need, was it could be done in time. Well, we're talking about a significant difference. My thoughts.
Jay, do you have a question?
Yes, my thoughts are, why start with the, with the plan, rather than find, figure out where you put all the displaced people? You know, you like the order, until recently, DPR kept that locked. In fact, it kept every room.
Jay, let's, let's give Brett a chance to answer.
You know, there are other things that are.
Jay? Thank you.
You're not doing the job of DPR. Great success.
Did you have a?
And before they did their study, I was out photographing people.
Jay?
And they used some of that.
Jay, you're going to have to let other people talk though, okay? Is that all right? Understand? Okay, Brett, can you?
I'm not sure if I got your question exactly. I heard versus statements.
No, no, it's a complaint, because I'm a little bit.
Okay. We need to move on. If that. Jay?
Yes.
If this is just a, just a complaint, we need to move on. Okay? All right, Jerry?
Before we get too far down this road, I just have a follow-up question to the RFP process. Are ANC commissioners considered DC government employees for the purpose of, you know, the technical review panel?
I'm honestly not sure. And it's the request that, that someone from the ANC be on that review panel, I can certainly ask that question, although I, that's never happened before. And I'm not a procurement officer, but that's something I can check in on if that's something you're interested in.
I think we would humanely nominate Chris. He's an architect, he's familiar with this process. I mean, I think he would be of real value on the evaluation panel, so.
That's, I'm sorry. That is something I can certainly ask.
Sell that in that way. You know, I think someone from the community would be of value, and particularly someone from Chris's credentials.
No, he'd tell me.
Happy to do it, actually.
Thank you. I'll definitely find out.
Okay, yes, sir. Can I suggest that that be taken also one step behind, so that when you are drafting the RFP, you can use some community input from someone like Chris?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think.
Be useful to you?
We would use some, and obviously I'd want to work with you guys to make sure that what we put in the RFP is accurate and reflective of what you, the work you've already done, because that's, that's a lot of work and it's valuable. It's a really valuable resource.
I mean, we would like to review the RFP, because I review many RFPs in a day, so.
Okay. Maybe, perhaps can I, maybe we can exchange information?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and you're absolutely right, yes.
Just a couple of questions. So, sorry.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you speak a little bit louder for me?
Sure. I'm not a business, I'm a real businessman.
Patrick's been involved in this process very early on too.
Also mine. Also mine. So just to tell you something, first thing, the community did what I would call a creative service, the agency did to get this survey done. In my mind, the survey document, or results of the document, is a most informed document right now, that anyone can look at to determine what a community's needs are. Will that document be either part of the RFP, or the project, or will the agency's design team actually do the RFP? That's the first. Secondly, I remember during that process, that you called me evaluating the response to questions, it became clear that there is a high desire for this building to still be used during construction. I mentioned to him, I'm very not sure whether it would be a phased, optimized renovation. I think the community has already told you that it needs to be a phased, optimized renovation. There are going to be programs that are going to be given while construction is going on. So if that not for me, if that survey is not coming from the survey, has PGS or DPR questions to review that survey, could then help determine what needs to happen.
Thank you, that's, those are the questions.
Can I respond to that for a second?
Sure.
I think for a building this small, phased construction would be extremely, would be very expensive, and would increase the construction time significantly. So my personal thought was, I mean, you could, I'd look at, I mean, should look at everything, but I really have my doubts about phased construction.
Do I have to add anything? But, follow up to that. If, if you're telling me that a phased, optimized renovation would take too long, it would be no costly to do that, is there going to be a situation where some, not all, some of the programs that now exist in the building will be taken because of all the locations?
Yes. So I want to make sure I answered all your, your first two questions. We will absolutely use the survey information to develop the RFP and absolutely share that information with whoever the selected architect or design team be. And I think as far as, to answer your first few questions.
Is it a bit after the RFP?
No, not, not just afterwards, it'll be part of the RFP that goes out. And, and to what extent that is, I'm not sure. That, that's sort of the, you know, we can make recommendations to the DGS procurement folks about how we would like for it to go out, but ultimately that would be their decision. But it is, is our request that that would be part of that RFP. I don't see that they would not, not do it, because of such little amount of information and it is incredible. And I, and obviously, you know, the architect, whoever gets the project, would get the full report. As far as phasing goes, I think that's a conversation we want to have, once we have enough information to make an informed decision on if that's going to be too costly, if it's going to, if it's going to take three years to complete a project versus if we close the whole thing and be able to finish it in 18 months. I think we would have that, an open and frank conversation with, with the community about that. You know, we don't have anything to hide, and we can make that decision together as a, as a group. And then we talked a little bit before too about whatever programs we can do in other places and maybe in conjunction with the library space, we would absolutely look at it all, all, all possibilities, absolutely. Good question.
Do we know anything about the materials in the building, whether there's any asbestos or other harmful materials that if the construction were going on, you wouldn't want to copy by part of the building while it is being worked on?
That's, that's a great question. Honestly, I, I don't know yet, but we would definitely, before, you know, that would be part of the discussions we have at that point. If we do find preliminary investigations that there is significant lead pain or asbestos issue, where it's, where it's going to be, you know, it's going to make the decision for us, we would, we would obviously, we couldn't do that. So we would, if we got to that point, that may make the decision for us. I just honestly don't know at this point. But there's a lot of sort of pre-work that are going to make those decisions for us. Two questions too.
I'd love to ask you.
Let's just get one question over here. Share the asking question.
I think a few addresses, but I'm not sure. And I'm curious as to when programmatic decisions about functions that are needed here in the new home, what are those locked in? Are they locked in before the RFP, or are they locked in afterwards, after a design team and an architect has chosen? Then is that what community meetings occur and the main decisions are made about what type of functions would be had as a result?
Yes, ma'am. Certainly, right. And so the programmatic decisions would, would be made after we have an architect on board. We want to make sure that we can accommodate all the, all the programs that, that are requested in the, in the given spaces we have in the building. And we also, I mean, I honestly, I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done so far with obtaining information, but DPR also has some supplemental programming requests and information that we, we'll probably do a little bit of that too, is to, to sort of reinforce and make, make sure we're capturing all the, all the stakeholders. So we'll probably do a little bit of that as well. But I've always thought it, it made sense to, to figure out what you're going to do in the building before you design it. That's just, that's just sort of the way, our philosophy, which makes sense, right? I know a, a lot of folks will build a building and then sort of see, well, what can we do in here now? So, so that's, that's our philosophy on that move forward.
Susan? I was just wondering, does the funding include if we have to rent transitional spaces for activities to continue?
You said, you said rent transitional spaces?
If we have to rent transitional spaces to keep us active, well, this is under regulation.
No, ma'am, there are stipulations on that capital money, and it has to be related to, well, it's, it's, it gets sticky, but it's, it's construction, it has to be construction related. And I understand that that can be sort of a, an offset of that discussion. But as far as I know, I don't think we were able to spend capital dollars on rental fees and stuff like that, but it's a good question. It's a good question on how we can offset some of the, the construction that happens here in the facility. Happy to look into that as well.
Susan, one thing we might do, and this is, has implications for the timing as well, is that there will be another budget round in the beginning of 2019. And if we decide that we need additional transition space, and that there are costs incurred because of that, we could go to the mayor, first of all, try to get something in the budget for that, so the DPR would have funds to be able to handle that transition. That would be in an operational budget as opposed to a capital budget.
Yeah.
And so we can do that. The process begins actually in October, November, when we start talking to the agencies. But then it culminates with the mayor's recommendations to the council in February. So we could do that as one way to address that. That would mean though, that we need to start thinking right away about what those transition needs are going to be, what, whether they can be accommodated someplace with no funding, that won't require any funding, or whether we're going to require some additional funding. So that's something we ought to really start focusing on pretty soon. Okay, Jay, it's one quick, all right, let's go with Carol. Carol, Jay, Carol has a question.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Carol Campbell, I'm the program director at Melwood Military Retirement Community, your neighbor, and if you're a longtime resident here, you as Army Staff. Hi, Becky, Becky's my neighbor. I live nearby too. I am very interested in providing some input on running programs for 13 years at Melwood and that area, and then a set of spaces. And we have managed to do just about everything. We can do almost everything except have 50-piece youth orchestra. We already have space for that, but we've been fortunate to be able to put them outside, so an outdoors space. Anyway, I've got a lot of ideas as I listen to this, and I really agree with who said, figure out, maybe you said that, figure out what you want to do there in that big space. And I've, we've done a thousand things, from speakers, from town hall meetings, from performances, from memorial services, from big parties, you name it, fenes, everything you can think of, we've done in these spaces. Easter egg rolls are outside, but we did do one indoors once. So we've served the older community, but still we've done this variety back too. So I, I just see things like quiet programs versus noisy ones. We have a performance space with chapel down the hall. I see how many floors, is there a height limit? We asked for four floors, but we expanded, and the neighbors put up a statement, neighbors always do with construction, and we cut it down to three. That means we never got our public space on the first level. It's all resident apartments. We should have asked for five floors, cut it down to four. Everybody says now, you know, conceived in four. Buses, do you ever have groups that visit buses? I run transportation. We take our buses all over the place. We might bring a bus full of people up here, although the metro that comes through, we're very lucky. What if we had a military band come play here, empty bus, parking, underground parking? State-of-the-art, absolutely, absolutely. You'd need technology, sound and video and all that. So I see a lot of storage. You have your tables lying around the room, but storage is really good when you want pretty room up. Utilitarianism is primary to me, because you can't pretty room up in all kinds of ways, place buildings. You know, those are some ideas I have that I, I love. And I think we have a lot of instructors, and we have those instructors teach at various places around the community. So we know there are more spaces around there, and maybe you could let the fee for the classes be paid in that space, then there's probably insurance and stuff like that. Anyway, I will provide lots of, to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Carol, that's great. Okay, Jay, real quickly, and then we're going, I've got one other thing I want to cover.
Has DPS and DPR and actually associated agencies like DCOA and so forth, which should be working together, consider other spaces to do something new, and then do this as a, as a rebuild? Because there are 2.2 acres of federal land centrally located in Arkenetica Avenue. That could be more than four, 21st century community center, and a senior wellness center, and other civic services. Where are those? There are Arkenetica Avenue, one lot from the Red Line at Van Ness, and it's between Van Ness and, I can't remember the names.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
Tell, tell the truth.
It's on the other side of Arkenetica Avenue, but it's centrally located to transportation. It's the same land that we had UDC from, it's just residual out of the, out of the, I guess it's NIST, National Institute of Standards and Technology, which moved out, it gave us earth, but we have it centrally located here. I think of it centrally located because this happens to be, this building typically happens to be your recording site in the, in the corner of this wall, and I wonder. So I, I think of things in their totality rather than just the center. So if you do a plan, and then you do the construction, it will take the same amount of time, if you get the property transferred, as to renovate this, and then defer the renovation of this place until you have something else.
Jay?
And then since it's also right next to UDC, you have a lot of unused facilities at different parts of the day.
Jay, what we're focusing on now is the money that we have appropriated, $19 million for this building.
Wasn't you want to spend?
We don't want to, we don't want to use it, lose it. That's our, that's our concern. We want, we want to do something with this building.
Use it for the people and use this area.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, there's been a lot of discussion. Brett, first of all, thank you very much. All of that was very, very helpful, and we really do appreciate it. You provided a great resource, and we appreciate you paying me.
Thank you.
We'll let you sit down for a little bit, and may call you up in a minute. There, there's been a lot of discussion about the, the report that the ANC prepared and issued last January. And it might be helpful just to refresh our recollection a little bit about what the report recommended. And its recommendations were synthesized in the executive summary at the beginning. And its recommendations were synthesized in the executive summary at the beginning. They boiled down to eight recommendations. And some of them I think we're already implementing as we speak. The first is DPR and DGS must continue to work closely with the ANC, the community and nearby neighbors to assure suitable transition space for key programs and to develop more detailed plans for the community center to ensure that the final interior and exterior design meets current or future community needs. That's exactly what we're talking about tonight. But that has always been viewed by the ANC as the core recommendation. It's probably the most important thing we can do is to make sure that happens. And we really appreciate DPR and DGS starting this process off right by sitting down with us and working with us. We'll continue that process. The second recommendation was to remove, reuse and recycle the interior and exterior walls of this existing structure, leaving only the structural supports and floors. Now that was a recommendation we made based on what we believed would be the least expensive way to proceed. Yet that proves not to be the case, then we're certainly open to other considerations. But I think the basic principle is we want to do the things most efficient with this space and least costly.
Are the options then still understudied? What is the most efficient?
Yes.
Anything, any option is the most actually studied?
I mean, I think if we come to the conclusion that it's much simpler and less costly to just tear the whole thing down, then that's what we ought to be looking at.
Or renovating more.
Or whatever turns out to be the best option economically and for all the programs. And the most important thing is that we have to get a facility that's going to do what we want it to do. But if we can do that less expensively one way than another, that's what we ought to be looking at.
Is costly on the community contact and design?
Oh, yes. That actually is in one of the further recommendations. Design the new community center to fit within the existing structure or within additional space between the rear of the building and the current parking lot. In other words, we wanted to use this existing space, not expand it to some larger footprint. And then we talked about the program and the kind of facilities that we expected to have in the building.
This is number five, right?
Four.
Okay.
Includes space in the new building for a fitness center with equipment, a lecture and performance hall with about 125 seats. This was something that came across in our survey, that people, we used to have a community theater in this building and that now is, we no longer have that, but we're thinking about having something that would be a performance space. We could bring in a military band if we wanted. And we'd be able to use that for a variety of purposes. Meeting rooms, game rooms, party rooms, a half-court gymnasium. We didn't want a full court. We don't think that's necessary, but we do think that an indoor, small half-court gymnasium would be useful for a lot of purposes. A child care room with indoor play area, a kitchen, a quiet lounge and an activity or tech lounge, a dance yoga Pilates studio, a fencing and exercise room, a pottery area and an arts and crafts space. Then offices, and I don't know whether any of you have been up to the roof of this building, but it's really a spectacular space up there. And we think that the roof of this building ought to be used effectively for either an outdoor area for seating or for a garden or for any number of other uses. We ought to take advantage of that rooftop space. Five, if you're keeping track, Phil.
I am.
Coordinate the design of the modernized Lafayette Recreation Center and the Chevy Chase Recreation Center. That's the one at 41st and Livingston Street, to avoid duplication with the community center and just take advantage of any synergies that can be achieved. Well, having Brett working on both of those is going to be a real advantage, I think, because he'll be able to look at both projects. And of course Becky's very involved in the recreation center project as are some of the other commissioners. Six, consider adding service parking space while minimizing the impact on nearby neighbors. That's going to be a very different part. It's always a problem, Jerry, and now heading a parking task force that's looking at parking issues throughout the community. But we ought, as we're going through this process, we want to make sure we're considering the implications for parking and whether there's anything additional we can do to this space. Finally, create a new building that is aesthetically pleasing in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood and buildings constructed to the latest sustainability standards, Jay, and fully compliant with ADA, the ADA Act of 1990, including updated ADA standards of accessibility. All of this was in our recommendations. And Brazilian, so they can serve as a refuge in case of an emergency or other widespread disturbance. This building is currently identified as a sheltered building, but it really doesn't have the capabilities to shelter. And we think certainly that should be a consideration in the design. And finally, this gets back to the reason why I wanted to have a library represented here. Work with the district public library to coordinate any improvements to the Chevy Chase Library, to take advantage of synergies between the two buildings and to unify and harmonize the campus to the extent possible. So all of those were recommendations that the ANC and the community, these really came from the community, recommended to the mayor and then to the council when they approved this budget. So these are the kinds of things that we think are at the core of what we should be doing going forward. So any commissioners have anything else they want to highlight, report? Jared?
Not necessarily from the report, but some process with the report, since a lot of people might not be fully familiar with it. There were about 950 responses to the survey and those 950 responses accounted for about 1,400 to 1,500 individuals. That means that a lot of the parents replied for their children as well, so that's how it faded up to that amount. And it was widely publicized. All the commissioners also went door to door in the neighborhood, was in the current parcel's connection in other local papers. So the recommendations that Randy's talking about were culled from this survey that did have a widespread response rate.
It was 700 completed, right?
No, it was 929, exactly.
Taken.
929 people responded to the survey.
Taken, but completed to add separate statistics on how many.
Some people leave out one question or another. A lot of people didn't put down their age, some people didn't put down their zip code. So there were about 750 that completed every single question. There were five questions that were demographic in nature and the other 15 were content in nature. And sometimes people didn't fill them all out. That's how you only get 700 plus that fill out every single question.
I just wanted to mention that the program that the ANC developed included gymnasium, half-court gymnasium. And we basically priced that out, the whole thing is $24 million or so. District cut $5 million from our requests, so it's possible we may not be able to accommodate the entire request.
Or we go back.
Exactly. I mean, there are two more budget rounds between now and the time we need analyzing this project. So we certainly are capable of going back to the mayor and council.
Right.
You're exactly right, Chris. Now, what I had in mind next was going through the process that we would use in developing the configuration and design of the building. But I think we pretty much covered all of that. I had a number of questions that I thought we could discuss, but I think we pretty much addressed all of them. The only thing that, and this was the suggestion I had at the beginning, is whether we ought to develop a smaller working group who would work with Brett, for instance, in developing the RFP or with Chris. And Chris would be the person who would convey the information onto DPR. If there are other people who want to talk about that, Chris, is whether that would be helpful?
You know, at this point, I'd like to see the RFP. I don't know if we need a committee looking over the RFP, I'll be honest with you. I think the time for committees is once we get the architect on board and we get into the design phase. You know, the idea is to keep this process as streamlined as possible. We don't want to waste a lot of time and money going around the circle. So I think the most, I'd be happy to, you know, chair a committee on the development of the program. And I think we should do that once the architect is chosen and we know where we're going on this.
Brett?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, this actually parallels nicely, we're working on the new Stedre Recreation Center down off Dupont Circle. And that actually, the working groups, was the first time we had tried that and they worked really well. We had a programming working group. As part of every capital project, I think it's 1% of the project budget goes towards art in the facility. And we had our art working group. I forget the different ones, but I think there are four or five different ones. Happy to share those and I think that's a great idea because you get a sort of smaller group that, you know, folks have different interests and it's, we found those to be super productive, so I'm happy to help with that.
As I mentioned with regard to the transition period, there, I think maybe we do need to act a little more quickly and be a little bit more proactive to anticipate what the concerns and needs are going to be. Assuming that there's going to be a construction period that will start maybe sometime in 2020, maybe late into 2020, how should we plan for that period when the community center is not going to be available either in whole or in part? And what are the kinds of things we ought to be looking at for to transfer the programs temporarily somewhere else so that they can come back? And there, I think maybe working groups might be a useful approach. Commissioners have any thoughts about that? About whether we should set up a working group to begin? The two things that I thought we need to do, first of all, is to identify the programs that we need to cover essentially, to make sure that there's going to be a place for them. And that's a relatively easy thing. France, back there, I'm sure she's got a list of the programs that we could, that would need to be moved if we had closure of the community center for a period of time. The more difficult problem is where did they go? And that, I mean, there are a lot of spaces around us that can be used. There are churches, for instance, it might be possible to use some of those spaces, especially for meetings and things like that. Lafayette Elementary School might be a possibility. We've had some difficulty with that, sharing that space in the past, but that might be a possibility. Millwood may be a possibility. Libraries a possibility. UDC.
Women's club.
Yeah, there are a lot of, I think what we need to do, and there are going to be, some of the programs are going to require such specialized spaces, like fencing, for instance, that we're going to have to be.
And dance.
And dance, especially dance, that we're going to have to find some really good alternative. And we need to do that soon because you're going to have to get it lined up and know that you can make that transition. So I would suggest that we ought to start a transition working.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Does DPR have a section that does that? That just works on finding space, alternative space, where projects are going? Do they have a specific section?
We do have some folks, some staff folks that, we don't have a defined working, like established group like that, but we do have folks that can help out with that and look at other areas in the facility that might have something similar or get shifts or we have to different places. Something I'm happy to look at.
Okay, but there's no specific like?
There's no specific.
Brett, if you can identify a person, a coordinator who could work with us, that would be very helpful. Because as I said, if it's going to entail additional costs, which it may well, then we ought to be able to, we ought to identify that soon so that we can start in the budget process to begin to account for that. Because we don't want to lose our dance program, our fencing program, several other programs are really successful and they've been here a long time and we don't want to lose them. We want them to come back after everything is done. And so we want to make sure that they've got very fast accommodations in the interim. Yes, sir.
... accommodations for a short period of extensive service. And I was like to ask whether there would be any kind of possibility to the construction company for exceeding the date which has been set as a completion date.
Sorry. There are incentives and penalties for finishing before and finishing after, so there's absolutely. And we enforce those pretty, we do pretty much. So we do. We hold, Board of Directors and DGS is very serious about that.
Jay?
I just want to go back to what you were asking. It's not too early to start working on group line transition. The fact that earlier we can do that, the better. There are a lot of people in the community that are already going to be worried about what's going to happen. And the sooner we can start identifying those programs, and it's not going to be easy finding space, so they might have to try out some of these spaces. So I think your idea about doing that immediately is excellent.
Yes, and then Becky.
Hello, I'm with Lawrence Ballet Program here at Chevy Chase. And because we do have special needs for advanced floor work, et cetera, we have already started looking for alternative spaces. One of the parents of one of the children that studies with us works at York Washington University. And they gave us an opportunity to come and look at their studio spaces for after school and Saturday news. It could be a win-win for the program, but there is a cost involved. So I just thought I would let them know.
Also DPR and all the other community centers in the city does not have a ballet scrum corps. It's not available anywhere else.
Yeah, I know that this is unique to this community center. And that's why, I'm really impressed, I'm really impressed that you've gotten out there already and started this process.
Well, we've been here such a long time and we have a lovely following. I've even taught one of the children, beating his daughter, who's also now very prominent in dance. And it's a legacy that we like to continue. And we knew we needed to start moving early to see what was available.
Well, that's perfect. And I think we need to incorporate that effort that you've been doing into whatever proposal we make. If it's going to be an additional cost, we ought to put that in the budget and we ought to cover that so that we've got it going forward. Because that's a cost also related to this community center that we don't want to lose.
Thank you, sir.
I have another question.
Yes.
Okay, so my instructor, Louie Yates, who teaches senior classes here, has already approached Wissner, Louise Hert Retirement Community on Western Avenue in Linderie, the vehicles and letting seniors use that facility. And I know that there's a cost involved. I asked him and he wasn't sure.
Let's form a committee.
Yeah. It's clear that's what we need to do is form a committee and a working group. And is there a commissioner who's interested in helping out on that?
I'll help out on that.
I'll help out too.
I'd be happy to help with that.
Okay, okay, I'll let you two lead on that. That would be great. Okay, what I would suggest then is that they form a working group. Anyone who's interested can participate in that working group. And in fact, what we should have done at the very beginning is have a signup sheet here for everybody. But I tell you what, after we adjourn, we're going to report to adjourn shortly, anyone who's interested in participating in that transition working group, see, Abe, Jared, and the meeting.
Also, in terms of the seniors, because Will Gates is Dr. Research, invite him in to tell us what he has discovered.
I leave it to the working group to talk to whoever is necessary. What we ought to do is identify all the programs that need transition and start looking for spaces that would be able to accommodate them and how much that's going to cost. And then we start preparing as if we're going to put a budget proposal together for the council, or the mayor first, and then the council, so that we can try to get this included in the fiscal year 2020 or 2021's budget. Okay? All right, that.
Do you have a comprehensive list of all the classes that would need to be relocated?
Fran can help us with that. Fran's? Yes, Fran should actually help in the working group, if you can, Fran, that would be great. Okay?
If you'd like to talk with Jerry, you can, the afternoon, please come up. And we can make sure you get your email, your name, we represent, start getting a sense of what you're going to need. Thank you.
Just sign this thing. Okay, I think we've actually accomplished quite a lot tonight. And I'm very pleased with the progress we've made. So, let's just ask everyone what they think about when we should meet next. It sounds like there's not going to be any significant action on DPR's part until probably late October or early February. Jared?
I don't, just before you do, can I just go over a couple of dates that we did hear tonight? So, you indicated that you thought the RFP would be out by the end of October, beginning of November, which is six weeks from now. You expect to have an RFP, you expect it to be out on the street 30 days, and you expect an RFP and award sometime during the first month of the next calendar year.
Yes, we expect to have an actual architect hired and their contract signed around, sometime in the first year.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify on those dates.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do those RFPs will be available?
They do go out to the public on the, DGS has a solicitations website. And it goes out on that website as well as, they may distribute it to, you know, architects in the region. I'm actually not sure about that, but it is, it is public record that it will be out and into.
Okay, so Brett will work with Chris in coordinating with us about the RFP, what the content of the RFP is going to be. And then hopefully, Chris can participate in the evaluation panel then as well. And if that's going to go on a track of its own, I don't think it involves a meeting or anything with the whole group. So I don't think we need to meet on that aspect of it. But I think on the transition, we should set an expectation of when we're going to meet again and get a report back from the working group. I don't know whether that's a month from now or six weeks from now, but I think we ought not to let that go too long. My suggestion would probably be that we have another meeting, special meeting of the ANC on the middle of October, something like that, four weeks from now? Okay, 15th of October?
We have it more on the 16th. Any consideration to be placed on working with other agencies? For example, many of the people here are proud of the changes and improvements at Lafayette. And what you've let out to public schools. Now, it seems to me that after school hours, 3:30 or so, that if you spent a nominal amount of money to separate the exercise and basketball areas and things like that for security purposes from the rest of the school, it could be open to the general community. So then, trying to squeeze in even a half basketball or here makes no sense for the outdoor facilities within blocks indoors.
Jay? Jared? Jay, hey, would you let me just address the issue that you just made before you call on anything else?
Yes.
There is now a group at DPR that is working on a protocol for shared facilities like that. And it's district-wide, there are a lot of issues that arise with security, there are a lot of other things that need to be considered in that process. We have talked with Lafayette Elementary School about precisely that kind of thing. And we're working with it, we're working on it. It's not going to be, it's never going to be the case, though, that Lafayette Elementary is an extension of the community center. It's not going to happen.
I'm not talking about the extension of the community center. I'm talking about the relationships of the different agencies, because it's economic scale.
Yeah, and that is all being worked on, Jay. And it's not something that we can address at the moment.
Actually, I do not trust DPR, because deeply, if you look at the budget and you look at what they deliver, they do not deliver the same level of services and equity here as they deliver in every other one.
Jay, that's not a topic for our discussion tonight. Okay, we're going to adjourn, I think. Anybody else have anything else they would like to talk about?
Could you just say that the acronym that you keep mentioning, I've been trying to work it out?
DPR?
What do they stand for?
Department of Parks and Recreation.
Yes, that one, indeed.
And Department of General Services.
General Services, thank you.
Okay.
The fact that you mentioned the library.
Yes.
Who knows the whole area of construction here, the zone, et cetera, that the library remains and remains for, for, if you want to be regular, is there any other opportunities there?
Well, we'll have to talk to Archie about that. But I hope, we're going to work with them to coordinate as best we can to make sure that that space is going to continue to be available. If it's not, then we'll have to make other accommodations. But the library, I know they want to make some improvements in that building. And we're going to have to work with them to coordinate that so it fits in with what the community center is doing as well. That, we'll continue to work with Archie and with the library. Yeah, I agree, I agree. And it will be difficult for them.
Have you faced a lot of construction going on here?
Yeah.
Without someone, they're trying to put this inside. The library is in this side of the city, completely, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, there may be some. We're just going to have to work, see how that works out over time. Okay, thank you very much.